We're going to, uh... What's the wording?
Continue.
We're gonna, uh... Chief Metzen is here, so I thought we'd just have a brief, brief discussion, so we're gonna...
Reopen?
Reopen our hearing on... Reopen our hearing on Bolton Office Park, on Capitol Partners and their proposal to go and assist the building facility.
Johnny, can I interrupt for a second? David Yatzwe, you had mentioned that he would be calling in. He hasn't called my phone, so do you want to give him a quick call, just to see? Or do you want to just before, kind of be called?
Uh, sure. If you're gonna take a moment to call David Yatzwe? Who'll be voting on anything?
No.
So, um, I think one... Well, we should wait.
Eric, could you say your name?
Yeah, yeah, just touch.
We'll just get started. One, one of the things we've been talking to Bolton Office Park about in the proposal is their fire suppression system. So, the current, the current system for the Office Park is, we probably know, is fed by the pond there.
The pond in front, yes.
Yeah, so the pond in front has a pipe that goes inside, and that's what feeds their system. That pond is something like twenty-three years old, twenty-two?
Yeah, the age is of concern to the fire department in terms of, you know, it's getting to the point where we're just gonna need some maintenance to maintain it.
Yeah, I mean, some people have said, "Look, it has lots of water in it," but, uh, you know, twenty-plus years of cattails takes its toll on any pond. So, I guess what we've said to them is that they don't know what their fire suppression is gonna be for the new building, whether it's gonna be new tanks, like at the Bolton Manor, or whether it's gonna feed from the same pond.
Isn't that true?
So... So, but we said if it was gonna use the same system as the Office Park, we would want an engineer who specializes in fire safety, but also evaluating water sources like that to, you know, tell us how much water that pond is holding and whether it needs to be dredged.
Well, I think just because of the age, it really shouldn't be... It could use dredging just to clean out, as you said, all of the stuff that's accumulated over the years. It's something that's been a concern to us for the last year or two.
So, have you filled up from it, from that pipe? Have you used it in the last few years, or?
Uh, we tried to flush it out and test it, you know, several times a year, so I haven't used it. And there have been some times when it's working fine, other times when, you know, it's worked not as well, and we suspect that that's because of, you know, that it does tend to flog up with a lot of the leaves and the debris that just keep on falling in.
So, can you describe for me the pipe? You know, we see the pipe, the red pipe that comes out of the ground at the edge of the pond. What is it doing in the pond? I imagine it's like in the mud and that you have to kind of flush water into the pond first, unplug it, and then... Describe that.
That's correct. I didn't witness the actual installation of that particular dry hydrant, so I can't say for sure what it looks like under the water, but I'm, uh, what, what it should look like is that the, the pipe goes from what you see sticking out of the ground down and then and then it changes into a horizontal pipe that goes out into the pond itself. There should be a concrete block or something that that pipe is resting on for support and hold it up off of the, off of the bottle. Again, I don't know if that's the case here or not. And then when we go to use, and on end of that, there's a strainer. Just a section of pipe with a lot of holes go within, basically, just sort of not sucking up large objects. But that is where it tends to clog up, really. So, it's, so sometimes you try to take water and push it backwards down the pipe to force water out through that strainer to kind of clear anything that might fall on top of it. It doesn't really do much to control what's falling around it, just what kind of what's on top. And then after that, you're gonna try to actually pump water out of it, just to make sure that that truck's working properly.
So, it's not, it's not really that you're using that to fuel your truck. You're using that source to pump water into a hose to, to put down a fire in the neighborhood. Is that right, or a shelf?
Both, really. It depends along, on the location. It was something close by in the neighborhood, we would probably, you know, lay a line and the pumper would connect onto that pipe and then pump water through the line to the fire. If the fire is further away, then we'd probably be filling up tanker trucks that would then truck the water to where the fire located.
So, when you've, when you've taken the water out of the pond recently, what has it been like?
In terms of what?
Like, how silty is it? How muddy is the water?
We've, so occasionally we've seen some, you know, some mud come up. You can, uh, is, usually you can see some residue on the strainer on the side of the pump or goes into the, into the fire truck. And you can see, you know, evidence of, you know, leaves and some mud. Sometimes it's clear, other times it's, you know, it is somewhat muddy like that.
Are there... So, this pond is on the Bolton Office Park site, but do, can you maintain it, or it can only be maintained by, who can maintain it?
Um, I don't believe that the town has an easement for maintenance purposes, so if we wanted, if the town wants to maintain it, we'd have to have permission from the, from the landlord or from Bolton Office Park to do so.
So, the other fire holes that you're maintaining are, are on Bolton Manor?
And most of them are on private land, and we've been getting owners' permission to do that. In most cases, it's not a problem because the owner is very happy to have that work done.
The town probably wouldn't want to do it because it's about twenty grand to dredge one of those and get it all set up and...
That's what things would happen.
Yeah, 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 so... If we can force them to do it, we save ourselves twenty thousand dollars, or thereabouts.
So, so the one that was just done across the street here, how much did that cost?
It was, uh, basically, pretty, pretty twenty thousand dollars.
Okay. Everyone see the fire hole that got cleaned out across the street?
Yeah, I didn't even realize it was there until it got cleaned out.
Yeah.
I mean, it was the water from the hole come from.
It's been there a long time.
Probably hasn't been cleaned for a long time. I've never noticed it.
So...
It'll never be used, but...
It's good to have a fire hole near the town hall. Uh, are there any other comments or questions about? Good. Was there anything else you wanted to say about that?
Well, my neighbor's just come to try to, you know, catch up on things since my schedule has allowed me to attend the hearing. But certainly in terms of fire protection, firefighting water, if I, um... The ISO organization, which is one of the insurance company information organizations, they have built formulas for calculating how much water might be needed to put out a fire in a certain type of, a certain building, a certain size and usage and things like that. And if I go through their, their tool for the building that's proposed, in the two stories, you know, basically twenty-six thousand square feet, we'll need from a thousand gallons per minute up to perhaps three thousand gallons per minute of water to deal, you know, with a, with a fire potentially in that building. With a dry hydrant on the front pond, you know, we can probably get the thousand gallons a minute from that, but we needed more, we're gonna kind of be, you know, stuck a little bit, we'll have to, there's no, there's no other, we'd have to go to other sources. One of the closest addition or alternate sources is the pond in the back of the Office Park. And I, we haven't discussed it before, but it might be worth a thought to consider if we can have the developer do it at their expenses, to also put a dry hydrant in there just so that if that additional amount of water was needed, that would be a readily available source for it.
Yeah, so I'm not sure, I mean, I think there's a, there's a pond back there, and then there's like a smaller pond in front of it? There's one along the parking lot, I think it catches...
Yes, and that's the one I'm referring to, yeah.
Okay.
Just, you know, the access there is so good from the property.
Yep.
Some other concerns that we've been talking a little bit about is, you know, access to the rear of the building. You know, we have decent access to the, to the front and kind of the wings, you know, the sides, but access to the, to the rear is really nonexistent right now. So, it's something that we've been discussing, you know, if we would like to see something better in that area or not.
So, does that mean, does it have to be a road, or it just has to be a flat? A flat area?
We're trying to determine that, you know, how, if there was an incident in that building, how would we want to be able to approach that in terms of the way to look at the trucks, how to get the men and the equipment inside and things like that.
Just because it's such a big building, I mean, you, I would assume you'd like to put in Bolton Manor, for instance, how to get to the back of that building. You would be able to, right?
You know, and that's one of our concerns, is that it's, you know, it's kind of a issue.
So, sometimes with those, you know, for emergency access, you have this kind of turf stone pavers that you plant grass in, but, so you don't have to see a driveway. So, there's something like that? Like some type of pad that can be driven up on, not all the way around, but that gives you some type of access on... I mean, I know on the right side, they're gonna keep that access open to the backyard and the community area. You've seen that on the plans?
I did, yes.
So, that road, there will be a road on the right side?
It would certainly have to be something that would be constructed in such a way that it would support the, the size and the weight you have of a fire apparatus. And the most likely in that case might, would probably be an aerial device, which would be larger than a pump, because we have an installation. Just quickly looking at, at the plans, um... Just, and again, just in terms of how could we effectively deal with an emergency incident inside the building? There are three sets of stairways. There's one set of stairs in the central track, kind of right at the front entrance, and then towards the end of both of the wings is another set of stairs going up to the, the second floor. On one side, I believe kind of on the west side, those stairs exit out to next to a door in the front of the building. On the, kind of the eastern side, the stairs exit to the rear. You know, it would be possible for them to modify their floor plan so the stairs exit to the front of the building. Again, that'll just help our access a little bit better.
What about the, the front drive going under the, what do they call, the roof end port for share or whatever? Now, I think designing for ambulances, but are the fire trucks tall in ambulances? And do you need to be able to get under that, or is that their standard?
We would certainly would want to be able to get a fire truck underneath there. It probably wouldn't be one of the primary places where we'd be parking one, just because it's so close to the building.
So, too close here.
But we'd still need to be able to, the only other case is what we'd need to, to drive, you know, under there just to get to the other side of the building, so. I believe we've discussed that before, that the height would have to be able to support.
So, the height is not just for ambulances, but fire trucks also, or is?
Well, I think that was one of the issues that they were gonna address.
And that ties right in with, again, another thing that we've been, been discussing is, you know, where, if we had a call there, where would be the best place to park apparatus and things like that, so that they would be staged in the right location if they were needed? So, we're kind of tossing on different ideas as far as, you know, where might we want fire lanes located and things like that? So, we're still working on that. And I believe the last comment that I know, I believe has been discussed somewhat is just, just with the, with the loss of the lifelike landing zone that we kind of unofficially have right now in the parking lot area, you know, it would be nice for the town, you know, if, if that could be located someplace, but I think that it's difficult to do that, unfortunately.
So, that, that helicopter landing zone is for the whole town? That's like the designated spot for Bolton in that part?
Yeah, there are other landing zones in different areas of the town.
Okay.
Not all of them are located on a hard surface that would normally be plowed during winter time, so that type of landing zone is kind of valuable just because it's, you know, it's maintained during the winter time where others aren't. So, they're not necessarily usable all through the year.
So, does the one there now have markings?
It does not, yes. But it hasn't been an issue so far because with the occupancy level of the, of the 5A Main Street building itself has been so low that normally that section of the parking lot, you know, hasn't been used for parking cars, so it has been free.
So, has that been unofficial, or has that been a permission?
Well, we have a permission from the property owner to, to use it. I just said unofficial just because it isn't marked as, you know, there's not a big H painted on the, on the paper, that kind of thing.
Great, so, um, so we'll add that to our list for, for our... Mark gave us the ending here.
I can send that along with emails, and then you know soon what would've been there.
Great.
And that, that was my concerns for tonight, so. We'll continue to, look at the plans and then work with Erica and make sure that everything's all set.
Great, that's very helpful. So, I think, um...
Can you continue the hearing?
Yeah, must have any other questions or comments? Oh, Mr. Lindsay?
I just so understand, the idea would be that it might be a requirement of them to get the approval for the plan that they dredge the fire pond?
So, we're still negotiating with them about, you know, a bunch of different things and the... They haven't come up with a fire suppression plan for the new building. Bolton Manor has huge tanks and a pump house, I think, so whether they're gonna propose that or to use the existing system, and I think that at that point we'll start, you know, if they're gonna use the existing system, ask them, you know, an engineer to look at the pond and the capacity and... So, we're kind of waiting, waiting on them to come up with the, their fire suppression system for the building.
Can I have a question?
Yeah, we have, you introduce yourself.
Oh, Andy Pedersen. I'm just curious, how many gallons did you think you would, how big is this building? How many gallons did you think you need to fight the fire?
Uh, according to the ISO formulas, it'd be the two thousand, three thousand gallons a minute for two hours.
One thousand gallons to two thousand gallons?
To three thousand gallons, worst case.
Per minute?
So, about three hundred and sixty thousand gallons potentially?
Wow, how big a building is this?
It's a lot of water.
It's twenty-six thousand square feet, I remember.
Wow, that's a lot of water.
What is the system over at Delta Financial?
They have, I don't remember, they have systems to support their sprinkler system. I don't remember how large those, those are. But then for additional water, they'll be using the same fire pond across the street that we've been, you know, discussing here.
Good, anything else? So, we have a motion to continue the hearing until January...
So, the tentative schedule for January, or for 2015, I have the next meeting scheduled for January fourteenth. Would, would we have a quorum for that date?
Oh, good. So, that's gonna be, they'll have answers to all the DRB, or hopefully have answers to all the DRB questions, and then?
Well, I did, I did talk to Mark, and he would like to meet with designer review board again before he comes back to planning board and board of selectmen, so I'm gonna try and schedule something before your next meeting so that can move the process along. It really just depends whether or not he's ready to meet with DRB. If he's not, then we could have another continuation. I'm just not sure yet, but let's at least schedule it for then and see.
Count them up. The next one will be meeting number eight. You have a contender, Andy. Someone's fighting for your record.
Make the motion to continue the hearing until January fourteenth at?
Seven thirty.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? I'm gonna accuse myself of century mill stuffy. Uh, so the next item, we're going to discuss Century Mill Estates and regarding the school bus stop, safety concerns. At two previous meetings, we've had, um, we've had members of the community who live in Century Mill, a web bot and live in Century Mill Estates, and they are, their children are gathering at the entrance to Century Mill Estates on Spectacle Hill Road, and while they're waiting for the bus, vehicles, construction vehicles, large tractor trailers with equipment, supplies are driving in and out, and the parents do not feel safe, you know, in the, in the morning for pickup and in the afternoon for drop-off, so we've been discussing having a, we're discussing two or three ideas. One of them was having, having a crossing guard of some sort on-site for pickup in the morning. I think it was at what time, eight?
I mean, I have to grab the superintendent one.
I have it.
I think it was seven forty-five to eight, but I...
And then another idea was moving the, moving the pickup area, I think, inside the development, which some people in town say has been done before, before the roads have been accepted, and other people say it's never happened. So, I think Erica is wanting to... Erica's been doing some great work trying to solve this safety issue. Can we talk about that, Erica?
Sure. So, I did reach out to the school superintendent, Michael Wood. I know there were questions at our last meeting about the fact that Northwoods, they relocated that bus stop into the development before those roads became public, so they wanted to understand why they allowed it for that subdivision, but they're not allowing it for this subdivision. So, I did put in your packet an email from Mr. Woods, basically saying the reason that they relocated for Northwoods was because for elementary school children, they're basically, they have a requirement that they shouldn't have to walk more than a half a mile to the bus stop location. So, in Northwoods, they had a kindergartner that had to walk more than that point five, so they were obligated to, to move that into the development, so that...
Shouldn't have, oh, sorry.
Yeah, so we'll just keep going with Erica's report?
So, I did have a really good conversation with the school superintendent, and he understood the situation, so he did reach out to the, the bus company. And based on the email that he sent me after we had talked on the phone, he said that the supervisor of the bus company was gonna go to the site and just review it for safety. So, they were gonna look at it again and, and see what they could do. It also says in the email that based on their dispatcher reports that the bus driver felt that the current stop was very safe and didn't see any issues with the construction vehicles going in and out of the site, so... And then he went on to say that the bus company said that it would have an issue going into the development now with the construction vehicles blocking roads and ongoing construction, so obviously the bus company doesn't want to have to go into the development due to the construction.
Right, so if they did go in, they'd have to back up or go into a cul-de-sac and do a turn?
I assume they would go into a cul-de-sac, 'cause Sider Circle is completed, so they could, they could go up there and... Because from what Mr. Wood was telling, school buses do not like to have to back up, and that was another reason why he thought they went into Northwoods, because Northwoods is actually at the very end of that bus route. So, rather than having to turn around in Warner Road, they prefer to just go into the development, do a circle, come back out, and go back down Warner Road. So, whereas we don't really have that situation in Century Mill, it's just one stop along many. So, that's basically correspondence with the superintendent.
So, that's one possible solution?
Yeah, so that was looking into relocating it. Then I also did contact about four different security companies on what they would charge for a security guard. Two of the companies didn't provide cost estimates, one company didn't have the resources, and then another company didn't have the availability. I did have two companies get back to me with pricing. One was MJ Norton Security out of Springfield. Both of these proposals are in your packet. They basically come, came back and said that they could do, have a, a security guard on-site for, I think it was around fifteen dollars an hour, at a minimum amount of time for four hours, so...
Maybe chinned, or?
Unfortunately, yeah. So, and then that's actually when I talked to...
This is okay?
Just hanging out.
Yeah. When I talked to one of the security companies, my understanding is that by, per the labor laws, they're required to have, they have to pay for three hours of their time regardless, so that's why they, they send them out for four hours otherwise, they're not gonna, they're not gonna make any money, so... And then the other company is RSIG Security out of Framingham, I believe, and they, they came in at twenty-eight dollars and fifty cents an hour, and it's the same thing, a four-hour minimum, so... I personally don't see how that's gonna be a viable option, but I at least wanted to hear.
So, Sider Circle, you go up and it's to the right? Is that how it goes? It goes up into the right and then?
Yeah, it's a cul-de-sac.
Right, it's the second.
And there's no construction on Sider Circle and the road going up, or?
Well, there's construction, 'cause there are houses, there's, I, I believe there's one house or two houses maybe going in on Sider Circle, but the roads, besides the, the final pavement and minor detours like that is...
There's curves and stuff, or?
Yeah, I mean, that road's pretty much, you know, done, so...
So, we're, you know, when you go through a town like Maynard, you see the crossing guards. So, you know, security seems, I don't know, seems like...
Overkill.
It's overkill, so I'm just wondering about crossing guards, and are they different? Is there an issue with?
Yeah, and I posed that question to the few, to a couple of these security companies, and it's sort of viewed the same way, crossing guard versus security guard. It's, when I say security guard, I really mean crossing guard.
Okay.
It's one and the same, they have to have similar qualifications, they have to go through similar background checks, so... And they're gonna charge the same amount per hour, so it kind of is what it is.
I guess I'm just remembering, like, when my childhood, but like crossing guards usually like lived in town.
Yeah, and that's usually funded through the town. The town of Bolton doesn't have crossing guards, so it's...
Okay.
Maybe that might be a worthwhile venture. I mean, this may not be the only place you'd want that ability.
Well, I know there's some of our bus drivers, or at least one I know of, lives, lives in town. Well, I know there's some of our bus drivers, or at least one I know of, lives in town. So just...
I mean, what's the training?
It's kind of overkill too. They have like at least two cruisers there when I need to go down 117 through there in Framingham.
Does it have to be a third party? Could somebody from your office, does somebody stand out there for 15 minutes? I mean, is that something that we would want or not? Just to make sure that, I don't know, somebody stand out there with a vest for 15 minutes or something? I don't know.
Did Michael would have any ideas about crossing guards?
Yeah, I didn't ask him that question. I really was focused on relocation, you know, when I talked to him.
And I think that would be the best option if they could go to...
I think that's really more a question for the police department than for Michael Wood. But I can follow up with it.
Does the police department have any problem with us hiring somebody being hired?
Um, well, I'm still, I'm still looking into that.
Is there any...
There could potentially be an issue since there's the four hour. It, it's really sort of a moot point at this point because if we were to hire a private company to do it and they're gonna require they're meant to be out there at four hour shifts, so does the police department. So we're not really, we would likely go with our own police department.
Is there some type of regulation that you have to have somebody insured and all this stuff or could just be...
Well, they have to go through a background check, like a core check.
Could the parents in the neighborhood, you know, take a day a week or something? I don't know, like, just trying to think outside the box here, you know?
Yeah, no, I mean...
Do you have a fluorescent yellow coat?
We can get him something. We can buy him a fluorescent yellow coat that he can share.
Something like that at either Home Depot or REI.
I don't know. I'm just...
Yeah, I don't know.
Here are a question. Is the dispatcher's opinion, can we trust that it's essentially like objective or is it more so because they don't wanna move the stop or go to the other? I agree that four hour thing is crazy.
Yeah. Honestly, I don't know the answer to that. I'm assuming that they're being objective and, you know, it's based on what they're witnessing on a daily basis, but...
And the parents are out there with their kids anyway, right?
I would assume so. I, I don't know. I haven't actually been out there when the kids are getting on and off the bus. I mean, I really, the more I've been thinking about this issue, I do think it's a short-term issue. Just because, Andy, I assume you're planning on developing that second wetland crossing on Road A next summer, right? So once he has that completed, the entrance at Century Mill will be viable at that point because then you can use that.
Yeah, if it goes all the, if we go all the way.
Last time you were here, you were saying that could be two or three years down the road? Is that, were you just being pessimistic that day or...?
Um, maybe, maybe even conservative, I guess, maybe, but I don't worry about it.
How are you, what are you thinking today?
Well, if we, we are planning to do a wetland crossing next, next year, next summer. I don't think the road will go all the way through because that's where the wetland crossing is, is...
Well, maybe not the road, but I was thinking more just construction access. You know, just to get your vehicles out of the site rather than using Spectacle Hill Road. You know, I, I was thinking that would be a good alternative at that point. So that way we can say to the parents, look, this is a short-term concern. It's really just this year. And, you know, maybe it's a compromise. Maybe if you are still concerned about the situation, maybe you drive your kids to school. You know, you go to a different bus stop.
I'm not, I'm not being, trying to be negative or difficult, but that entrance on that side, like Jim knows, that's a huge cut. So it's not, and it's not as, it's not, I mean, it's doable obviously, but it's just not a simple thing to put in like a temporary entrance over there. I mean, if you're gonna do that, it's, you know, it's significant undertaking. It's not that easy to get, you know...
Ten of the northern...
Yeah, yeah. I mean, just the temporary.
So it's still like that?
Yeah. Yeah. It's a thirty, I think it's around a 35-foot cut.
I remember walking that many years ago.
Spectacle, not spectacle, but Century Mill Road to the, you know, it climbs up 35 feet and then plateaus. Plateaus pretty quickly, but, you know, distance-wise, except that, you know, with leveling, the required leveling areas you have for roads and so forth, you have to get quite a ways in to do it. And then you get erosion concerns. I mean, just to do something temporary over there, it's not that simple. I'm just trying to say it's not that simple.
So, so yeah, so we're trying to solve it on our end. Did you guys have any ideas?
Well, me just thinking about it, I mean, if it, you know, temporarily, you know, we, well, they could, if, they don't wanna come into the property, is that what I'm hearing? So...
Well, we, we don't know, but just is there a way in that small window of time, like 20 minutes in the morning, 20 in that afternoon to...
Well, I certainly have control over the trucks, for example, that we hire. And what I guess I could, I mean, I could certainly notify by email. Because we, we don't really on a regular basis have big trucks, like, you know, one after the other coming in and out. Certain times if we're importing material like gravel or, or something. But it's not on a regular basis. What I mean by that is it's not daily by any means. And so I could notify them that the, that they won't be... There, there's on spectacle road, not even including South Bolton Road. I mean, there's many, many stops along that street where the buses stop and pick up kids. You know, the town, we won't, I don't know how, somebody got this far. I mean, I mean, there's, there's a list of stops that they make, the buses, to pick up children. And, you know, there's, there's like six or eight right on Spectacle Hill Road. At some points, you know, that doesn't, with South Bolton Road, which, you know, so I mean, maybe if we notified them like, okay, we're, we're planning on doing trucking on, you know, this week on Wednesdays and Thursdays, they could go down to the, a few hundred yards down the street and...
I think it, I mean, it'd be, it'd be great if you could be in contact with all your delivery people and just tell them what the times are, the bus picks up and drops off and to stay back. You know, if they see the bus, stay back, wait a few minutes, that type of thing.
It's, it's...
So the picture, we had this photograph and it showed the kids on the corner. I think Alan got a copy. It shows the kids waiting in a group and then this big tractor trailer bed with huge concrete culverts like chained to it and the bus, I think. And it just, you know, it did, it didn't look that safe. The combination of a bus, a huge construction vehicle, and then a group of kids with their parents and, you know, the radius, the turn. Is that picture around?
No, I think it's right now.
I mean, there's 312 places in Bolton on the list where kids are picked up. I, I mean, I can't imagine, because this is a very quiet street, that this is the least safe place in Bolton or far from it. So many places in the area where kids are picked up. I, I wish I had a good solution. I mean, if you could get the bus to come in, I could build an easy way for them to turn around. Currently over a lot, you know, like we have a staging area. I mean, if I had to build a driveway so to make it really easy for them to like do a loop.
Well, you know, the last time you were here, you know, we had a full house. Everybody, the, the meeting before that had kinda gotten their, their skin out and yelled and gotten upset about all, you know, the noise, but also, you know, concerns about safety. So you missed that meeting, but you have people who bought in your development and I'm sure they're emailing and calling you as well.
Actually, they are.
Who are very concerned, you know, about this, the situation, the safety of it. And as you sell more houses and more people move in there, it's just gonna get, you know, unless there's a way to settle this down, it's just gonna get more and more, it's gonna increase.
We do, like, you know, in our purchase and sale agreements, everybody acknowledges that they know that there's gonna be continuing construction in the development and they agree not to interfere with the construction. And that it may disturb them and it may, you know, and so forth. I mean, that's in our, all our agreements. Same thing with, just, you know, for working hours, we have them broader than what we were permitted for. That people know we're gonna be, you know, so people certainly are aware and not only they are that aware, they've agreed to the, that they understand that. I mean, when they're buying in a new neighborhood, I think it goes without saying, but we actually do have it in writing with all of our buyers because it's in all of our purchase and sale agreements. I don't know, you know, I can...
If they could come in and you could do a little turnaround at the, with the staging area. That would seem to go a long way towards stopping the...
Well, they could do it up on, as a cul-de-sac, they can come in, it's perfect, you know.
That would be great.
It's all paved. It's, I think the only real remaining work on the road is probably the top coat. Other than that, I mean, the curbs are in, grass is growing on the...
Yeah, so I think that...
And you're waiting at a quiet area, right?
Well, that depends, you know, how, you know, if the bus driver feels safe and there are a lot of vehicles around when they're doing their turns. So that is one option. The other is some type of crossing guard or somebody directing your construction vehicles for that 20 minute, 15, 20 minute period. So it's either, you know, it's somebody who works directly with your company who goes down and, you know, flags trucks and tells them to wait. You know, it could be something that simple.
When you say wait, the road's narrow. If, if, if there's a truck and you tell them to pull over on that road, it's gonna cause more problems than that when the truck come in.
And maybe it's not that they have to wait, but maybe there's just someone there, you slow them down, say, okay, calm kids, you know, that kind of...
No, I understand. I'm just saying, I'm trying to be...
It's just what crossing guards do everywhere. They put up a paddle, stay back. It's, and it's just for a little period of time.
I understand. I'm just saying, I'm trying to give you as much information as I can that it's not a, you know, that road out there is, certainly is adequate and two cars can go by each other.
Ultimately, a crossing guard would be profitable. It's tough to stop commerce. You just wanna control it.
Right, no, and I agree, but just unfortunately, I just don't see how we're gonna get around that four hour minimum.
This morning I had an appointment with Wellesley. I was calling from you to Wellesley and I noticed on, and I had never noticed it before. The town of Wellesley had four or five different people at different corners, running from Webster to Central to Cedar because it was around the corner from the school. And they're all dressed the same. They had, they had the old town of Wellesley guard. These looked like municipal employees. They didn't look like they were third-party people. They had the same raincoats and stuff. And they were, and this is big-time traffic. This is nothing like Bolton. This is, you know, heavy. And they were in total control of everything. It was great. And it occurred to me, that, that's what should happen here. And just, I'm surprised that...
Well, of course you're gonna...
Yeah, yeah.
There's so little traffic.
Is there really? There's nothing there?
It's also Wellesley. We have houses that sell for more than an angle wedge at Bolton. I mean, that's a different scale, but I disagree with your...
They have like five different people on, in the different corner. I hear what you're saying, but...
What currently takes place at busier, at the busier pickup spots?
I don't know yet. I'll learn next year.
Grateful. Oh, you have a...
Yeah, okay.
Are you moving to Century Mill?
I don't, I don't think I've ever seen a busy pickup spot in Bolton. Do we also have more people on border queues than themselves?
Like on Main Street?
Well, the bus stops, you know, the bus stops and maybe it's a pickup area for two houses or just one. I don't know what happens at Northwoods now. Do they stop at one spot or every house?
I hardly ever see more than three or four kids get off a bus anywhere in town. They stop that often. The houses are spread so far.
Probably stop a group behind the bus. It seems like they stop at every house. 317 stops. They, they, you know, give you personal service out there. That's correct.
Yeah, I mean, it's only about 15 houses.
317 stops and 900 kids in the school. So that is...
Right, I think it's around 15.
Yeah, same kids per stop.
Jim Ratsner, did you have a solution?
I think I'll stay at it.
You know, I don't think the, the, the four hour minimum is 60 bucks per morning and 60 bucks more per afternoon. I don't think that's particularly high. I think a police detail would be maybe double that. And the police have the same deal. There's, you can't get a police detail for 15 minutes. You get the police detail for at least two hours or more. So I, I don't think that that's an outrageous fee. Now, the problem is that it would add up to $26,000 a year and I don't know who pays the, the $26,000 a year.
This is where we need Mark Duggan back. TJX's Framingham cops that show up at the end of day, you know, direct traffic out of the parking lots because it's impossible to make a left out of their lots out there.
Now, our trucks come, I mean...
But it's not every day even, nearly enough. It's monthly, but not all.
Our vehicles only come from one direction, from the, from the north. I mean, I'm just wondering if they could, you know, just outside of our, if the bus could, well, the bus must go up, past our place, right? Up the hill?
It must be going, continuing on and turning at some point.
Right.
Past, past Spectacle Hill turns into what?
Uh, Bolton Road, isn't it?
Where is Wheeler Road? I know, I think there's a pickup at Wheeler.
Yeah, there is. There's several of them over there. It's like eight at Spectacle Hill. I just don't know which way the numbers go, but I know that like our entrance is at approximately 34 Spectacle.
Less than an inconvenience because it sounds like we're trying to solve something. Is it unrealistic to have delivery hours that span whatever it is, E15 to...
Yeah, 45. The short answer is yeah, it is unrealistic because I don't know, you know, I don't know when all the trucks are coming. The ones that we're hiring, you know, I mean, it's...
So there's a foregone conclusion that there has to be a solution other than delivery hours?
Well, I mean, I, I'm just afraid if they, I'm just afraid of being in violation when I really can't control it. If they're, if the road is closed down for certain hours and, and I would ask, is there any other roads closed down in Bolton for certain hours so that, you know? But if they...
So, you know, so we have...
I mean, if the bus went pa, I'm sorry, but if the bus went past my entrance, the entrance, and went a little bit up the, just, you know, a little bit past it. I mean, we could create a little area over there for kids to stand. I mean, we have a sidewalk on that side of the street. And the, the trucks don't go there. They would be turning in before that. But I know the parents, you know, like they come down some division road and park on the right side and then they line up, which, you know, they're basically lining up right... Which, you know, they're basically lining up right at an intersection. You know, maybe they.
Yes, so we had current residents of Century Mill Estates, and then we had a gentleman who's moving in there, and he has four kids. Something like that. So, you know, he's contemplating that, you know, that issue for next, next year, so. I mean, obviously, we're gonna keep working on this, you know, I just, you know, we're not saying you have to shut down the road, but that you could communicate to your, you know, your drivers as well as, you know, everybody you're doing business with, you know, this issue. 'Cause it's not, if we don't do some, if it doesn't get a little better or halfway better, it's gonna keep coming up. You know, they seem pretty vocal, and the more houses you sell, you know, you're not having single couples, that many single couples.
No, no, I just.
So it's not, this problem isn't gonna go away, and so, you know, I'd like.
I agree with, eventually it does go away, 'cause we'll have two entrances.
Yeah, it's.
But we don't.
Yeah.
I mean, the, for the parents that drive their kids down the street to the corner, there are alternatives. They could drive another hundred yards to another bus stop.
You try telling them that, and we'll see what happens. I mean, that's just not, you know, what they wanna hear.
It may not be what they wanna hear, but I mean, it's not unreasonable to say to somebody, if you're concerned, go to this next bus stop where this, where these other people go. If any, it's only a couple hundred yards away, probably. I mean, is that, you think, you think that's unreasonable?
Yeah, they spent eight hundred thousand or whatever the houses are going for, and, you know, they'd like to sit in their cars on, on, you know, that road, the access road to the development, rather than out on Spectacle Hill waiting for another bus stop. Yeah, no, I can understand, you know, why they wanna be where they are instead of driving down, so.
I'm just saying temporarily, till there's another entrance.
Okay, well, we'll keep working on it.
I mean, like I said, I, there is a sidewalk on, on the, that side. I mean, we could extend the sidewalk up a little bit and give them a place to, a couple benches, and they could sit.
I mean, extend the sidewalk up along Spectacle Hill Road.
Yeah, made it that's.
So it sounds, yeah, so hopefully the bus company's gonna come up with, say yes.
We'll see what they say.
The other alternatives, I, I don't, yeah, I don't.
The other alternative is we have to get them all back in here with Andy and hash it out.
I'm happy to.
Well, I, I do think it's a compromise. I think, you know, parents, I don't think it's too much to ask them to drive. If they're that uncomfortable to drive to a different bus stop or to just drive their kids to school, I get that. I mean, if I had kids and I had major concerns, I, that's probably what I would do.
Yeah, I can put somebody else.
But I also think, Andy, that you, you should try and curtail the construction vehicles to the best that you can. I don't think that's a lot to ask either. So as, as much as you can or have control over those vehicles coming in and out, you should be working on that as well.
Do I, um, do you mind if we have a converse about this, just to try to?
No, yeah, 'cause we have.
Okay, I'm just, for, like, for how long a period, like, the bus?
It's literally fifteen minutes in the morning and fifteen minutes in the afternoon. It's a half hour a day. I mean, to me, that, that seems like a no-brainer, just.
Well, let me just, I'm not saying, no, I'm not saying yes, but let me, let's assume on, that on the days where we do have trucks running, which doesn't happen that often.
And, yeah, and I, I actually liked your idea when you were saying that you could email or call the residents to tell them, okay, today we are having vehicles come to the site. If you could do that, that'd be awesome, 'cause then they would know, okay, well, maybe today I will bring my child to school, or maybe I'll have the kids wait in the car with me while we, you know, until the school bus gets here, like, all right, I think that's.
Sounded like a lot of concerns with everybody, just a little more open communication would make things go a lot smoother.
I mean, I just, I just want you to, just trying to, for information purposes, let's assume you have five trucks that you've hired for the day. That, that would equal four hundred dollars an hour. So for an hour that you tell them, don't, you know, half, would you say half hour in the morning?
Well, it's, it's fifteen minutes in the morning, fifteen.
You know roughly that on Tuesday, I'm probably getting a delivery between seven and nine in the morning, you probably know that.
No.
No?
I, I really don't, I mean, like.
You don't know, like, trucks just randomly show up?
Yeah, like, if we have, for example, today Ferguson delivered some sinks for a house, how would I know they're coming?
Just to give you some credit, too, I personally hear you trying to solve the problem, I mean.
I would love to, I'm, I'm really trying to converse to see, brainstorm.
Yeah, and I think both sides are doing it, I don't think, I, if I were living in Century Mill and I were parking my car down there, I would feel entitled to do so as well, but I also agree that if you're that bothered by it, it's not necessarily a right, so you do have other alternatives. We're talking about also, you know, the cul-de-sac turnaround, I don't know if they wanna do that, but that is an option. You're talking about being able to put benches in, and, and, so I don't hear you being, like, no.
I'm happy to, to do something, and, and, you know, it's, I just don't wanna, I, I, what I'm afraid of is, is being in violation of something because I don't have enough control, like Ferguson delivering, you know, I mean, it's not a big truck, a trailer truck, but it's like what, box truck, like a furniture truck?
Is there a site manager that's on-site during these times that would be capable of being down there? And I think the parents seeing that somebody is there, and whatever.
Yeah, we could do, as, I'm not, you know, everybody's so conscious today about litigation. Or, I mean, if, I would say we would do our best to have someone there. I don't wanna, with the.
No, you're not committing to, but it is potentially, potentially a solution.
Yes.
But I think making a list of the solutions.
Yes, I could, and certainly, you know, like, on the days where we are doing trucking, I certainly could do that and notify me. I just don't know, like, we, we have, like, plumbing supplies, we wanted them from, you know, for our house.
I don't think box trucks are the issue, it's really.
It's the big flatbed truck with the, with the.
And the dumpster trucks.
Yeah.
It's just the big, big.
We don't, no, the tractor trailers, the log tractor trailers, they don't come in our property. They can't make the turn.
Well, there was a picture of some flatbed truck. So let's, maybe we can kinda come up with some kinda guidance?
I mean, they, they, that's very rare, that we have, like, a tractor-trailer truck that comes. That's rare. We do get, like, ten-wheelers, you know, dump trucks.
So how much space do you have to build a little sitting area off the?
I don't know, I, I think we have.
Like, ten, twenty feet off the road, or fifteen, I don't know, how much space?
Well, there's a wall, and then there's, there's a stone wall, and then there's probably, I'm gonna guess around fifteen feet.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, the picture that the parent sent was like, the kid was standing right on the road, and this big truck was coming around a corner.
Right, well, the, the way they'd be approaching is the opposite. If you wanna, I can draw it, but the sidewalk could be extended a little bit to a sitting area.
Yeah.
And the trucks don't come from that direction.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They come from the other side, if they're coming into our property, they would make a lot.
So I mean, the parents could say, hey, make sure you stay on the bench or near the bench.
Well, they could move all the way to a sidewalk, stand on the sidewalk to the pickup area.
Yeah.
And, but these.
You and the parents can meet in the middle.
The little thing is that the parents, they're not, we generally, I don't think, have very many kids that are, this is a line of cars where parents sit with their kids in the car.
Let, let's assume that'll be constant, though, like, either way, we're gonna have trucks and we're gonna have parents, and we don't wanna disrupt either too much. The Ferguson deliver, like, sinks or whatever. But do you know when dump trucks are coming? Do you, like, are those scheduled out?
If I've hired them?
Yeah.
Yeah. If I've hired them, what they're generally doing is, let's say, going to Clear Summit, getting loaded with gravel, coming to my property, dumping, going out, back and forth. Again, that doesn't happen on a regular basis.
If that works in your favor, though, if we can find a solution that.
However, I have a company that does come, and they notify me, they deliver fill, and they just say on Tuesday, we're gonna be sending you fill.
Yeah. It seems like if you could solve like eighty percent of the problem, twenty percent of the time, I would think a reasonable person would be like, yeah, you know, it happens every once in a while. But if you're showing that you're making a considerable effort, and you can say, when I know trucks are coming, there will be an email, and there'll be a site manager during these two times, and we'll put a little sidewalk area, I think that is very reasonable. Yeah. And that's just my opinion, I'm not speaking for anybody, just me, as a parent.
And if that's not enough, then they can go to another bus stop, yeah?
I think the less formal.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I mean, I would hate to, like, I would hate to have to, like, you know, force anything. It'd be nice to.
'Cause it builds goodwill as well.
I'm happy, I, I'm happy to do it, I'm just, I'm, the only thing I'm afraid of is, as I said, is something, some decision that I can't live up to.
Yeah, I don't think we're talking about changing a condition, anything like that. We're, we're just talking about what everybody can do. So hopefully, the bus company can come through, you know, that they feel safe, and they can say yes, and then they're experienced driving in there, when they're in there, that they feel like it's safe and they wanna keep doing the pickup. It'd be a shame if they started doing it and then, you know, something happened with your vehicles, and the bus driver said, it's not safe, and I'm not going in there, so. So we're all gonna keep trying, and we're gonna hope the bus comes through. But, so we're not talking about a condition, but I think there are three things that you can do, that you've talked about.
If, if, for example, the bus was coming in, we could, we, we would have more control of any trucks that are already in the development. For example, you know, if we know that the pickup is at seven fifty and trucks came into the development, we could have them pull up and stop. It's just hard to say, don't approach our development at seven fifteen, because it's, it's, once they get there, then I know they're there. So having, like, a crossing, you know, like, we could do something about that.
Okay, so we'll get some good news from the bus company.
Oh, yeah, listen.
So the next item is the, the retracting authorization to pave road seat prior to April first. So we had emails from the town engineer, Fred Hanway. So Erica, we, we, so we gave, we gave Andy authorization to pave road seat between November fifteenth and April first at our October twenty-seventh, twenty-second meeting.
Correct.
And then.
That was based on Fred Hanway's peer, peer review report.
Oh, if he felt our approval, contingent on his.
His approval based on the temperature, it has to be warmer than forty degrees, and the moisture content in the base material needs to be five percent or less, so. I know last week Andy worked very hard in order to pave road seat, but the weather just did not allow, nor did the moisture content meet the requirements. So, and actually, Harold Brown, DTW Director, was also contacted about the situation, and Harold called me and said basically that he's not gonna approve any road that gets installed past November, so.
Even if the conditions are.
Even if the conditions, you know, for that day are, are okay, he just doesn't feel comfortable with paving after, you know, a certain date. So that's basically why I put this on the agenda, and I've put together sort of a retraction of that approval, so.
Does anybody have any questions? Have any of you ready to finish reading it?
Yeah.
And then we have a letter from.
It's, it was just to email correspondence, and then I had prepared a letter. It's just a drop letter, if you agree to the retraction, then you could sign there, so.
So did you wanna say anything?
Uh, two things. It's not the end of the world for us if you retract, okay? However, I would suggest that sometimes you do get, it could be a week of fifty-degree weather, and if Harold and the engineer both thought it was okay, maybe that would be better than retracting, because it would, it's a common benefit to get the pavement down. It's cleaner, it keeps things clean, and, like, you know, with this rainstorm we had, it's, it, it is better to get the pavement down for everybody all involved. So that's comment A. The comment B is we, that I did discuss with Fred, I wanted you to make you aware that if you don't allow us to pave officially, we may. And he thought it was a good idea to put down like an inch of pavement and have to take it up in the spring, again, really just for the cleanliness issue. And I think that was discussed today, right?
So, so right now, so we're talking about putting down the base.
Temporary, though.
Just a temporary one-inch binder, right?
Yeah.
It's just, yeah, 'cause right now the site's really muddy, so it's just to kinda clean things up.
But the road's not muddy, the road is.
No, the road's, but everything else is pretty darn muddy, so.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
I mean, and, and, you know, so.
And the idea is, is that you would take it up in the spring?
Yes, no, no, no.
You'd have that one-inch binder on, so that would, it's just a temporary solution to the, the muddy situation.
So when you talk about the moisture content, that's the moisture content of the crushed.
Yeah.
So that has to be what percent?
It has to be, my understanding, it has to be five percent or less. And, and when you tested it last week, it was like, but we had just gotten rain, I think it was at like ten percent.
I guess, I mean, that, what I've noticed in the winter is that when it does warm up, it's usually very wet.
I'm not disagreeing with you in general, but sometimes we do get a week of warm weather, and instead of retracting, you could say, if Harold and Fred both said it was okay, you know, next week, who knows? I mean, if you, it could happen, that's all I'm saying, and if they were fine with it, I mean, we're not gonna go, we're not gonna go down there. I don't wanna pave if it's not right either, so. But, I mean, I didn't, I'm not trying to cause a problem, I'm just saying, instead of retracting, if they both agree.
So we don't have to get approval for a temporary one-inch?
No, um.
Fred said it even you have to be there.
I, I don't think so, because it's really just.
It's not something that's allowed except ownership of, where the lines of which is.
You're taking it up in the spring, so.
It's really just a temporary.
I just wanted to tell you in case we paved and we.
Okay.
Just didn't want you to like, think we like did something against your wishes.
And I'm not sure. Did you actually ever talk to Harold?
I haven't, didn't.
Okay, because when I talked to him last week and he was very adamant that he's not gonna accept the roads after, after November. So I, I hear what you're saying, but I think it's gonna be a public point, because Harold's just, he's not gonna approve it.
No. He's a human being. Certain days, people say one thing. And then, you know, if we had a, you know, a couple of weeks or, you know, no.
And to be honest, I, I agree with them. I, I think it's a dicey situation. And plus, don't most of the asphalt plants close?
There's always something open.
I mean.
Yeah, I mean, when we think about the freeze thaw, like, we get that thaw and basically, you know, if you have a gravel road, it turns to jelly with all the water in it. And then maybe after a week of warm weather, it firms up. But it's, I don't see it happening till April. It would be a freak.
Yeah, and I, I think originally when the planning board gave their approval, when we were doing our construction meetings, I think the intention was that you were gonna do it at the end of November, early December. So unfortunately, that's.
Yeah, no, no, if you.
You know, so.
I'm just making a suggestion.
Does anyone have any questions about that?
I'm just saying it'd be amenable to, if it was in early spring, get rid of all the snow, to, you know, taking suggestions to open the window up early. But I think, you know, at this point, yeah, we've just gotta buckle down and get through it like we do every year.
Boy, he's been nasty already this year. James Riley.
Yeah. So do we have a motion to rescind the?
Make a motion to retract the permission to pave between now and April first for Century Mill's dates.
Second?
Official paving.
Official paving, yeah.
Yeah, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anycons? Thank you.
And Jonathan, do you mind just for file, signing the retraction?
Eric, have you got that five thousand?
I did, thank you. Yep.
So is there anything else related to Century Mill?
It was not on the agenda.
Okay.
You guys got anything you wanna add?
Question. How are we doing with noise complaints lately?
I haven't received any, so that's, that's always a plus.
I think I saw one in last week's paper.
Oh, really?
I don't know.
I didn't, I didn't read the paper.
Yeah, I'm, I'm always amused at you. Every car accident involves such and such on SE. But yeah, I saw the, the one, I've seen two, maybe three in the blogs over the weeks.
Actually, I think, I think that back, Andy, because last week, I don't know if it was Wednesday or Thursday, maybe it was Tuesday, you called town hall asking for approval to work past five o'clock.
Right.
I didn't receive any complaints, but I know that the, the police went down there and you weren't working past five o'clock. So.
The police, is what the police told, well, heads with.
So the planning board was not aware of that situation, so it's actually a good thing that they, they hear about that.
The police, I, I called to try to do the right thing. Was the only reason I called, to ask permission. I did not get permission, so I consider that we check down at five. The police, when they were there, said they were going to issue a citation because it was five oh two. That's what they told me. Five oh two.
Well, there've been many times when they've gotten there too late and this was the one day when they got there right on time. So I mean, in most of the situations, they've come and there hasn't been anything.
That's because we shut down.
No, no, because, you know, sometimes it takes them ten minutes to respond or they're doing something else. So, you know, that you do catch.
We shut down a time.
It sounds like it's greatly improving though, right?
Yeah. Well, it's good.
Even five oh two, I mean, it's.
I think everybody's, you're not getting as many calls.
No, well, also, I mean, it gets dark now at five o'clock, so it's not like you're gonna be working in the dark. So you're sort of forced to head work.
Things have slowed down.
Yeah.
You have a really good pilot today. Or yesterday.
But people were probably happy that nobody was working on Thanksgiving.
Drop like eighty-one more. Except it's, you know.
So I think it's, I think it's getting better. I only saw one complaint in the newspaper for last week, so I think there have been three previous to that or maybe two weeks previous to that. So.
Oh, they get printed in the paper?
I didn't realize that.
Excerpts from the.
Excerpts. I don't know if it's like a complete.
I don't think so.
They put in the most interesting ones.
I haven't seen any, you know, wandering animals, so I don't think it's complete.
Okay.
Okay, now we're going to.
Yeah, no, I think.
We are very good.
All right, then we'll do that.
Thank you.
Is it bye-bye time?
Yes, it is. My favorite time of year.
Okie dokie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we ready by law then?
David, did you have anything?
No, I'm just. Thinking of maybe doing after six more to bed.
Oh.
That's good. Recovering? Y'all recovered now?
I recovered.
I didn't. But this is the schedule. All the due dates in relation to town meeting and election. So it's always important.
All right, these are the dates?
These are the dates. Yep. So draft budgets and articles were due to town administrator on December eighth, which was, I believe, Monday. So I put together a draft and sent it in, but obviously that needs some work and some input from you at this point. And then basically the next due date is December eighteenth, where draft budgets and articles are due to Board of Selectmen by noon. So that's next Thursday.
Questions for ya?
Mm-hmm.
Mostly a strict chronology, but then it goes February eighteenth, February twenty-third, February twenty-eighth. So, this is post-public notice of the caucus, seven days before the caucus, which is on March ninth. So maybe it should be like twenty-eighth or something. I think this is just later, but we don't really care about that on a planning board.
So the first issue is the housekeeping on the mixed-use village overlay district. So it's related to density.
Yes, and I put an email in your packet. I had contacted Doug's story, because I know he started moving and that brought up the issue of density, so I wanted to get his recommendations for what he thought it should be. So.
So we don't have any mention of it in there now?
No, no, not now.
It's just up to the board's discretion?
Um, it's kind of a, the overlay is in conflict with our zoning. You know, we have zoning of one, one house per, you know, one point eight acres. So part, I think, one of the issues is, is that part of, part of the parcels that come under the overlay are zone residential. Some are zone business. So it's probably, is it the residential pieces we're trying to get into?
Well, but the overlay is a new. It's a new zoning, so.
It's just it has to come into compliance with the existing bylaws, so we have to change.
I don't understand why, I still don't understand this, why it would have to come into.
Or maybe Eric.
I mean, I still don't get it, because it's its own district now. It's a, a new zoning, right? Although, like, so we say it's, it's. I'm kind of with Eric. I mean, my understanding of the overlay is all the underlying zoning remains in effect, but whatever is specified.
Right, and I think that's where the problem is, is that it's not specified. So when it's not specified, it reverts to whatever.
Okay.
Current zoning is. So that, I think that's what Doug, Doug's point was. Okay, for residential, you're gonna, it's gonna revert to whatever existing zoning is, which is, under Fosbury, one house per acre. So you wanna do better, you wanna have a higher density than that.
So, I mean, so the overlay is. The overlay is only five, well, commercial, two buildings per or whatever. So the overlay says ten percent.
Building coverage?
Ten percent building coverage.
But that doesn't say.
But that's not density. Building coverage, you could have one building and have it be huge, that's not ten percent.
Or you can have a hundred buildings.
I think it's, it's just, it's related to the housing. It's, I don't think it's related to the commercial parts. It's just this housing part.
It's the number of units per acre, right?
I just, I mean, personally, I feel like.
I can.
I get it. I, I feel like, you know, we don't need to specify that. I think, you know, the plan would come to us and we could do what we want with it, as long as it's ten. I'm saying the ten percent rule is there.
Well, Doug's been concerned about this, you know, all along.
Because if I had a maximum number of units, then, you know, someone could come in and say, well, you know, we, we want a hundred units of housing on cluster on an acre. And then we'd be like, well, we don't like that. And say, well, your, your bylaw says we can do it, so we're gonna do it.
So the incentive is, is that we might have something coming up that wants to take advantage of the overlay and that could get logged down. But also, I think town council has reviewed it.
I know last year when they reviewed, they said, they said that we needed that requirement as well. I can, I can ask why. I can.
Well, maybe you could run it by MAPC.
Yeah.
And just see if.
I mean, am I thinking of it wrong? So it's ten percent. So if somebody wants to build a hundred units on that ten percent, so they have what? Point one percent coverage for each unit? I mean, well, we just.
Just senses a footprint. It's not the number of units, right?
Yeah, correct. It's the amount, it's the amount, it's the amount of slack. On a lot, you know, what, what we're saying is the underlying zoning, which the bylaw didn't contradict in terms of residential development, is you have one house per lot, regardless of how big it is.
Right.
So, you know, I think the clear intent was so that we could have a more dense situation than that, you know, four houses per lot, or, well, actually not total lot, I should say, per, per acre or per eighty thousand square feet. That's the magic number. So the underlying zoning says one house per eighty thousand square feet. Our intent was to allow greater density. So say if it's four houses per, then it would be one per twenty thousand square feet, or eight, it would be one per ten thousand square feet. Regardless of what the footprint. I understand what you're saying, but I was under the impression, maybe wrong, that the overlay overlays that. It overlays that, but. So, 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 I mean. For us, it doesn't say anything about the residential.
It does in terms of the business stuff.
Yep.
But I don't think it does for the residential.
But even the residential, so like that, we're talking, I guess, the cane property, they have the front commercial, limited business and that back residential. I mean, it's not divided into lots. It's one huge lot, right? The residential on the back. Well, yeah, but I mean, each building lot, which for residential purposes is a minimum of eighty thousand square feet and less under Fosbury. Right. Gets one house. So say they had thirty acres under Fosbury, they can put up thirty houses. Regardless of overall. But this isn't. Or they can put up a whole bunch of. Overlay is, takes that, overlay takes that residential. The overlay doesn't speak to the residential. That's our problem. We have to have it speak to the residential. Well, the overlay, for the, I guess, the cane property, if we want to take that as an example, takes that residential portion and the commercial portion and it makes it one overlay portion, which you can have ten percent and, and with a mix of commercial and residential, you know, and. But the. I still don't understand. We need to. How it even comes into play, what's, what's in the past. You know, if the overlay specifies a higher density for business, well, commercial buildings, we need to specify a higher density for residential buildings.
Is there a town that can help us kinda anchor it? Is there like another town that we admire so far as their use of the same district that we could?
Well, I mean, I think town council's come up with, and Erica come up with this language. I think the important thing is, I mean, Erica can ask MAPC.
Yeah, it's gonna be, I know Westboro has a village overlay district. Actually, I did check theirs. I don't know. It wasn't very near the man, but.
Where Wagnons is?
I don't know.
But, you know, ours was tailored specifically for Bolton, but.
Totally, yeah.
But just, you know, I think the important thing to talk about tonight was, you know, if, if we accept that we need to make these changes, what is, what is the density we'd like to specify? So, you know, Doug talks about the Regency, which is the densest development so far in Bolton. And he was saying that was four units per acre. So those are attached condominiums. What, what we were looking at in the village overlay were kind of two-story attached. So, you know, Doug was saying, so doubling the Regency. So imagining the, the, the density of Regency, but with two stories instead of, they're like one level for.
How do you feel about that?
Fifty-five, I don't know. I mean, I, I think, I think eight's a good number.
I mean, if we're trying to create a village and we're only allowing ten percent coverage, you know? Well, it's a matter of how, how clustered that ten percent is gonna be. Yeah, this is have to be spread out.
If you put a one-third, guarantee condominium building on a ten percent footprint, I mean, unless, if we had no constraint on density, that theoretically happened.
Luckily, we do have a height control. But, but yeah, we, I mean, again, this isn't a forty B. This is a special permit that's gonna come before the planning board. And if, you know, it's not something that's gonna be forced upon us.
Right, but it's, it's still one per eighty thousand, unless you.
Right.
And in the neighborhood. I still don't understand. And the neighbor who doesn't want this to go in says, hey, wait, wait a minute.
It's just.
This doesn't say anything about eight houses per, per acre.
We can allow more density than the bylaws allow. I think that's the thing. We can opt through a special process, say.
That's what the overlay is. What is the overlay if it's not? But we don't specify that in.
The overlay doesn't say that we can increase the density.
So you'd like it just to be a float, no number.
Yeah.
We decide it based on the.
Yeah.
The proposal.
That's kind of what my impression of the overlay was.
Could, could, if we did that, though, could we end up, is it possible, does other language in the overlay prevent somebody from, say, taking the cane property and turning it into just a residential development? With no business or almost no business?
The overlay says it should be balanced.
Okay.
They, I don't think, you know, the, the committee that worked on it, which I was on, didn't wanna specify a sixty, forty, but they did say it should be balanced.
But if we allow too much density, we could end up with proposals where there's quite a few units on some of these, on some of these overlay.
Again, it's a forty B. It's not a forty B.
No.
It's a special permit. I mean, we have.
So we have a discretion, but it's still that potential. And so if you make it, if you put an aggressive number in there, then that point could be made at town meeting. People could flag this as a potential concern, you know?
And maybe it's just my ignorance over this, but I don't understand. I thought the overlay gave new, you know, restrictions in bylaws and got rid of the residential and the commercial piece and, you know, these are the new, these are the new rules.
Yeah, changed the zoning.
Yeah. I mean, so now we're saying, well, it changes zoning, but the, you know, what was there is still. But only as specified. That's the problem. So, I'm not a lawyer and, you know, Doug, I'm sure knows more about planning board than I do. So, so, I mean, I just don't understand how the, what this is covering. If we don't put some sort of guideline in and we just say, you know, planning board can make the decision, I can tell you, and I think you've experienced it too, that certain people in town will say, wait a minute. With some patience and the right amount of money, some nefarious developer can stack the planning board with his people and then put in, you know, whatever nightmare scenario they can dream up. Because you know that point will be made by somebody. Right, but the whole plan. I don't wanna hear that. The whole plan of the overlay was that the planning board has the special permit ability and. Within the specified limits, right?
Well, I mean, staying eight, eight units, that's, that's, I mean, if you bid during the Regency, that's. They're four units. Just imagine a second story. That's, and then they need more parking too. So I think, I think that's, that's like a good place to land.
That's that place in stone next to Bose is?
Yeah.
Personally, I hate it that everything is the same color.
Yeah, me neither.
That's, that's probably lower density, that's probably lower density, because those are like.
But they're absolutely uniform.
Two family houses.
You know?
I mean, are we saying that we wouldn't want, so, I'm trying to envision some of the, some of the visions of what the overlay would be, and there were like, you know, some shops in the front and maybe some like garden-style condos in the back, some of them were showing that, so, I mean, are we saying that you can only have, you know, I mean, we do want to reinvent, we can only have like a, a set of four in a certain area, so, I mean, I thought it was.
No, it's how much the lot will allow.
There weren't really no lots in the overlay though, that's my only point.
Well, everything's a.
The Kane's is a big lot.
It's one lot. Well, I guess it's two because it's residential.
That's, and then, you know, Dr. David and, and Freddie Friedas could join forces anytime, or somebody else could buy them out and redo that whole thing if they wanted to, I mean, it's there, but there is, just might you talk about the project? I mean, is that something you can talk about?
Which project?
Um, the one, the country cupboard?
I, we can talk about it, yep. I met with Michelle Tuck last week, uh, to talk about that project. Unfortunately, um, they've explored the, uh, using the overlay, however, with the cost of the sprinklers, to do an apartment upstairs for a new building on that lot is astronomical, so they've decided not to go that route. So, they're not, they're gonna use it on current zonings. And I, I, I just, I have a feeling that we're gonna hear that quite often.
Well, but.
Well, that's fireproof, there's nothing we can do about that.
Right, right.
I mean, I won't keep on belaboring the point, but the whole point of the overlay was that it would have the flex, the flexibility of here's the ten percent, work with the planning board, work with the D R D, you know, work with almost every board in town to get what the town wants, so I don't understand why we have to start picking hard numbers and all these things, you know, put it in here. Maybe I'm wrong. I don't.
Go ahead, Mr. Lindsay.
Um, personally, I think the Regency is probably too dense, but I think that's sort of maximum density, and I think what you're talking about with eight units is the same ground level density, but going up.
Right.
And I think that ought to be the absolute maximum we allow, and I worry if you don't put a number in, the, the base from which the discussion starts might be something way more dense. In other words, the developer will come in with something that's, say, sixteen units on, on that amount of space, and you may have you in down to twelve. I'd like to see the eight in the, the bylaws so that that's where the discussion starts.
Yeah, no, I agree. Eight is really, I mean, you have to imagine the Regency, but with parking for people upstairs, so.
Yeah.
That, you know, you drive in there, it couldn't get denser, and I don't know, they would put the parking in, but you'd lose, basically, it would be townhouses and parking, there wouldn't be any.
I was surprised how dense the Regency turned out to be relative to the original proposals, and I worry that something like that.
I'm not saying, yeah, I'm not saying that I would want this super dense thing, I'm just saying that we have the power to not make it like that.
Well, wasn't three. See, right, I think if some developer comes with a, a more extreme idea, you're gonna wind up just, just the way human psychology works with something denser than you.
I think the Regency was also clustered, so in order to, you know, keep that buffer of open space around, so instead of, okay, you know, four eighty thousand square feet in, you know, every, like that, and have them in a grid, because no one in Bolton's gonna like something like that, they kind of jammed them all together and then left all the trees up, which is much more of a Bolton. So, I mean, it's still four per acre, it's just, in reality, it's a bunch of bed space and then everyone jammed together.
I think you're also gonna get more opposition at town meeting if you go with a higher density number, people will be more concerned about it.
I mean, I just feel like, you know, we have total control already and that won't happen unless the planning board gets stacked, what you said, you know?
So what, what's the density at, um, what is, what's Marco Hagan's project called?
Oh, well, I mean, well, right now it's called Bolton Mayor.
That's forty B though, I mean.
No, I mean, it was approved for a forty B, but he's doing it less than he's, he's doing thirty-five instead of, I think it's permitted.
It was permitted for like forty-two or something around there. I, unfortunately, I don't have the numbers on that project.
Anyway, the restrictions are, it's turning out, are the sprinkler systems.
I know, that's the thing.
And the septic systems, he decided he's doing all.
And the numbers.
Yeah.
Septic field, instead of, he's not doing a package treatment system because it's too expensive, it would, it would, each resident would be paying like four to six.
Right, I mean, the.
Cottage fee.
The fact that we're, you know, private water sewer really puts major limits on any type of development. Unless, unless you get your.
Also provides incentives for deeper density too.
Unless you get your sewer district.
The more toilets you can put on a packet system, the, the wire, the cost is spread.
Right, no, and if, you know, if it was a big commercial and residential.
Yeah, home depot on a hundred and fifty units, that, that would make the cost pretty reasonable.
Yeah, so what we want, we don't want is like those towers by Wegman.
Well, we have a height restriction.
Oh, that's right.
I know, but.
I mean, what is it, thirty, it's thirty feet, right? So it's, it's really a maximum two floors. It's not just high, you can shrink the units to get more of them on as well, right? I mean, that's another thing, with more density, you get more units, make them smaller.
There's probably some Jeffersonian quote somewhere, just to Mr. Lindsay's point and what the board is generally speaking about. If we left it up to ourselves anytime, yes, we count on ourselves to make reasonable decisions, but that's why, for example, we have a constitution and bill and stuff, so like, so that we're not forced to be in that position to screw it up for everybody. So I think.
I agree.
Yeah. So, you know, you take what, a hundred, a hundred thousand square foot, what's that? It's two, well, I don't know, like ten acres. You can only build on one acre, I mean, you can only get so much in there.
No, I, it, it's not ten percent. I thought it was like fifty percent has to be.
No, it's ten percent building coverage.
Fifty percent is impervious.
Impervious, but it's ten percent building coverage.
Well.
I mean.
The Kane, I remember the numbers, they were, you know, pretty big for Kane. You remember that, like, big, big buildings and lots of housing.
I like a lot.
So I don't think, you know, it's just, it's the right developer. So, um, should we vote on eight per acre and then we'll just see what?
Something, did you say, what, what did you say that, that?
Regency is four per acre, and that's, that's one.
Why not use four per acre? It seems like that's a lot.
Well, again, it depends on how they're spread out on the lot. If it was in a grid formation besides the aesthetics of it, it would.
Don't forget, there's supposed to be some group of business in front of this property as well.
So, so.
It's gotta be balanced.
Just, my whole argument isn't that I want it dense, my whole argument is that we already have, what are you talking about in there? You know, we are, we already have control over that, we already, it's already up to the special permit process.
Okay, yeah, so we're gonna explore that, but I think it'd just be good to kind of get something done tonight and vote.
As a thought experiment, how big's, well, like a palatial CVS nowadays, like twenty thousand square feet?
I think they're forty to fifty.
That'd be.
They're like, yeah, they're like old supermarkets.
So forty thousand square foot CVS, two thousand square foot condos each, that's twenty condos on the roof of a CVS, you know, dimensionally, that would all fit. That's, I think substantially more than we would.
That, that, that's if.
Sounds like somebody's nightmare scenario.
That's if some of those condos are in the middle and don't have any windows, but.
Well.
Either, either way.
If the price is right. It's no sky, skylights, I guess.
Or some of the apartments would be upstairs and above the business, and some would be like duplex units in the back, but attached.
I mean, if you wanna put some random number, do, do it, but, I mean, the whole idea of the overlay is that it's flexible, and they come to us and we can say, that's ridiculous, you know, take this plan away. That's exactly what we can do.
Can we do four unless we somehow say? Remember when it was originally proposed, we, we proposed instead of ten percent coverage, we should propose twelve, and that was defeated because that was one of the main.
I was pushing for fifteen.
People are very concerned about these upper limits, and, you know, I think people don't buy the argument that the planning board will be, will, will, you know, reasonable people and will, um, because, you know, who knows, this is the planning board now, but the ten years will be completely different, I don't think.
Well, I'm here to twenty nineteen, and I.
Twenty nineteen.
Twenty sixteen.
Put your hand up.
Yeah. You're here, well, actually, you're.
You could be here to twenty twenty.
So your kids go to college, is what you're saying.
What's that now, newbie?
Put some, uh, yeah, just put some random number.
So, uh, so it sounds like we need to keep thinking that, that eight seems like too much, I mean, if you're gonna talk to Cynthia and M A P C about this.
Yeah, I can touch base, and I, I think it's, it's a good idea to touch base with Doug again about it as well. My only concern is if we, if we.
What did Doug, what number did Doug say?
We don't make the maximum high enough.
I did, I just forgot what number he said.
Wait, let me retract.
It's gonna be a deterrent using the overlay because it's not economically gonna be feasible for someone to come in and, and make money on a, on a low density, you know, when you take into consideration the infrastructure, infrastructure costs, I mean, it's expensive to do wastewater treatment facilities.
I mean, the whole point of the overlay was, not that we'll ever look like Concord, you know, but that type of like village atmosphere, you have like this little ten percent pocket in this huge brickland with, you know, there's some shops and there's, you know, maybe some small condos, and it wouldn't hurt to have, you know, some smaller square footage apartments in town, you know, like, that was the point, to have like a mix of. What about the one in Sudbury? Huh? Do you know the one in Sudbury? It looks very colonial, right outside the center of town, do you know what I think that is? That's.
That's probably, yeah, that one's probably like Regency, but those are, those are like two families in one.
I don't know, I just, I like the way it looks, and it didn't seem.
That looks more like kind of a cottage overlay. I, I think Doug's, you know, he's recommend, you know, we asked him for his advice, he's recommending eight.
Well, if you, by the way, I'm quick, a minute, our current building lot is one per eighty thousand, if we go to eight per building lot, then conceivably we could have one per ten thousand square feet, uh, what's an acre, forty-three thousand square feet?
Forty-three five sixteen.
No.
Forty-three five sixteen.
Yeah, no.
So that, what did you say about eighty?
She just outdid here, because John's.
No, no, so let's just say take ten acres, you know, for a size.
Yeah.
So that'll be forty-three point five one six, uh, potential units in a ten acre span, just so you can have a mental picture of that.
Forty-three point.
So you're saying the one every quarter. Yeah, I was gonna say it was a point five one six.
Wait, say that again, so if you have ten.
Forty-three five sixteen times ten acres, so that comes to.
Ten acres, so you can build on one acre, so forty-two, forty-three.
You get ten per building lot, I'm sorry, eight per building lot, so instead of eighty thousand square feet, you get one per ten thousand square feet. Ten acres is four hundred thirty-five thousand, a hundred and sixty square feet, as I just learned, um, so that'd be basically forty-three units with Doug's suggestion over a ten acre span, so that's the sort of density that we're talking about.
Maybe it's twenty-one and a half units stacked.
Well, that's another way of looking at it, though.
So, yeah, so it's, you just have to think of two-story condos at the Regency.
Yeah.
Or townhouses stacked.
Duplexes or.
So eight per acre.
I mean, the.
Yeah, just trying to put a number here so you can visualize.
So, yeah.
This is, we're trying not to get a big box store in the Kane property, so that was like one, you know, one of the ideas about the overlay is, you know, trying to get something that's more village scale rather.
This goes against trying to get something that's more village scale, but.
No, I think eight, eight is, I think a good number is gonna do it. I think that's.
As long as they save enough space for Starbucks, my wife will be okay with whatever the project is.
That word is evil.
I'm not, so, you know, whatever, but sure.
Wait, so, so ten acres, I'm, I'm, okay, I'll, I'll do this for one more minute, so ten acres, ten acres.
Twenty, twenty units.
Fifty-five?
Twenty, twenty, eight, I mean, ten acre area, you can build on one acre because it's ten percent, that's forty-three.
Eighty thousand square feet, so not quite two acres.
That's forty-three thousand, so we're saying one, what were we saying, eight per acre? That's what you were saying? Or eight?
Eight per building lot, so one every ten thousand square feet, or roughly four and a third per acre.
I need this written down.
How big, how big is your house lot?
We were gonna get out of here early today.
I do.
So picture about eight and a half units spread out on your house lot.
Christmas is coming.
Or four units doubled, spread out on your house lot, so you can get a visual.
And that would be ten percent.
That would be ten percent something different, don't worry about the ten percent.
Okay, so it sounds like we need, we need some more information for, I think eight's good.
So how do you wanna handle that article? Cause it's due next week, so.
They're due next week, so we need to vote on.
So potentially, do we want to stick with the eight?
We just need to put the placeholders in the.
No, that's what I'm saying, so for, for now, do we wanna keep with the eight, and then if we need to change it later on, we can think about doing that?
Yeah, I mean, we, technically we have two months to nail down all the details, but we just have to decide, are we gonna move forward with this this year or not? I'd say yes.
I mean, yes, I just want to, you must understand it.
It's gonna take two months to make that understanding happen.
Which one of these are related? Which of these articles are, are they all related to the overlay?
No, there's, um, there's only another, uh, the next one that's related to the overlay, and that's basically, last year, we never updated the zoning map to show the overlay district.
Okay.
So that's the second article, is updating that map. Um, I haven't done the update yet, so once I have, have that, I'll have the picture inserted into the document.
We didn't get to test it out yet, but there's no other areas we'd wanna add to it.
I think at this point, I think we wanted to test it.
Yeah, we would have, we know.
We haven't tested it yet, so.
First we need to like do our housekeeping?
Yeah, yeah, well.
In case it does.
Sounds like the only other possibility would be Skinner, but even that is, doesn't really make sense, so.
I mean, at one time they wanted to do a cottage overlay there, but, you know, the real estate agent might have the idea, but.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So what are these other articles?
The article that was the, the article three, I touched upon this, uh, last time. This was, um, to allow for a dimensional variance special permit through Z V A to allow, you know, residents, um, to basically, uh, go before the Z V A and request a variance. Say, for example, if they wanted to do a front yard, but they were encroaching into the front yard setback by a foot or two, they could say, you know, I'm requesting this, this special permit, and the Z V A could make a determination based on whether or not, um, that new front porch was more detrimental to the neighborhood or not, um, and it would have, uh, it would basically stand up in court that way, because if they go now for variance, because they wanna do a front porch and it encroaches in the front yard setback, and, uh, they don't need the findings for a variance, um, and someone challenged that variance, uh, more than likely they would lose, uh, in court.
So this just gives the Z V A a little bit more flexibility?
Flexibility, exactly.
So, but, so is this coming from Mike Savageau, or is this? So, but, so is this coming from Mike Savageau or is this coming?
This is coming from, well, both Mike and I are recommending this. Now, I know I brought this up last time, you guys didn't really say too much about it, so I kept it. Obviously, I can pull it if, if you're not in favor of it. I am meeting with ZBA next week, I would like to bring it to their attention, obviously, since they would be the special permitting authority on it, um, uh, granting authority on it, so.
It seems to be a good thing.
I would like to see what they say about it too. And if they're in favor of it, then, um, you know, then we can go from there too.
And I'll say that, uh, if they like it, I like it.
Yeah, I mean, um, I mean, you were saying right now they're kinda doing it sort of under the table, kinda just like looking the other way, sort of.
Variances are the highest level of relief a town can get.
Yeah.
So you have to meet very specific requirements to get a variance. So a lot of times when a resident comes forward and they wanna do something that's really not more detrimental to the neighborhood. You know, say they are encroaching by a foot, they're not really hurting anyone, no one's really gonna even know. Um, however, the, they're not meeting those specific findings, so the board will sort of not look the other way, but they'll come up with maybe some not very valid findings and they'll issue the variance. Well, if someone were to challenge that.
It could be like a neighbor that challenges it.
Yeah.
And so this is legal cover for the zoning board of appeals, right?
Exactly, so it's a special, it's a different, uh, easier avenue to go through.
But detrimental to the neighborhood is very kind of broad rather than detrimental to your neighbors.
Well, here's an example, um, on Sugar Road, the last house on the left before you get to Golden Run, had an old ramshackle dump of a garage and they wanted to rebuild a nice garage. It's probably twenty feet or less from the roadway though, so clearly not meeting setbacks. So, um, they had to get a variance for that. Uh, Doug ended up building it and the guy whose house it is is now on ZBA, which is, you know, this is why you got interested in it, but it's this sort of thing. Um, there was something there before, it was a dump, they wanted a nice one. Who's farming that, but then the neighbor says, well, we're not supposed to do that, just because the, you know.
But he didn't wanna put it on the existing foundation?
No, it is on the existing foundation, they didn't wanna, or, you know, footprint it, it was a new foundation, but they didn't wanna kick it back into the thirty feet.
What's the setback from the road even for residential is fifty feet?
Something like that, I mean, it's, it's.
Yeah, you remember residential?
Oh, yeah, that's.
I mean, you can just fit a car between the road and the front of the garage, so like if you parked in front of the garage facing it, you know, you'd be out of the road, but not by much.
But it sounds like that went through.
Yeah, that went through, uh, but, you know, it's the sort of thing we're talking about. You know, it's not necessarily, you know, any, any bad thing, just hey, I wanna shed, but, you know, I, I can't fit it more than, you know, twenty feet off my property line because I have one of those crazy scheming lots. You know, can you help me out here? That kind of idea?
Yeah, um.
Yeah, so I think you put a lot of faith in the ZBA then again, right?
Well.
Well, it's not that, it's like, there's the public good, I mean, there needs to be some protection for neighbors.
Oh, I.
So public good is very broad, like, you know, how does everybody feel in my neighborhood about?
Right.
Rather than like the people are gonna be most affected by it. So if somebody wants to build, you know, you know, a shed right on the lot line or something like that, that's gonna affect you.
Get that guy that lives two blocks down, you know, kids have upset him by cutting through his yard one too many times and now he's out to get you. Don't laugh, I mean, this is the kind of.
No, so all of these, um, are subject to public handbrake.
Mm-hmm. So this applies to dimensional.
It's dimensional.
Um, and it says, a dimensional special permit would not require, it's almost like what it's not requiring. A dimensional special permit would not require findings based on soil topography or the shape of the property as with a typical variance under Massachusetts.
So those are the, when I was saying specific findings, those are the findings I'm referring to.
Right, so this would allow them to consider only the things that they mentioned, which is the detrimental effect on public good and so on. And essentially, they don't have to concern themselves with soil or topography or shape.
Right, something that's unique to that property. But they would also be looking at, you know, maintaining the integrity of the zoning bylaw. You know, if the front yard setback's, you know, a hundred feet and you wanna encroach fifty feet, I don't think they're gonna go for that. But if you wanna encroach two feet, three feet.
So it said that, right, small amounts?
I, well, I think the zoning board, the zoning board of appeals would, you know, would use best judgment.
Well, specifically, they would consider the effect.
Right.
What they say there, that, um, adverse effect on the neighborhood, diminishing air sunlight and other amenities, nuisance, serious hazard, I mean, they would consider those things.
And being a special permit, they could impose conditions, so, you know, they could require a screen or they could, you know, anything that would offset the, the impact of whatever they're requesting.
Okay, well, let's see what the ZBA says.
Yeah, it, it's plenty where it doesn't feel comfortable with it, you know, I have, I can certainly feel that.
It's interesting, it's just, um.
It's just sort of another tool in the, in the toolbox, I think.
Yeah, so have them have a discussion if they could like write, write up.
Sure.
Just a little something for us, to help us with it.
I've got an issue with Article Four.
Okay, Article Four, um.
It looks like it's just to limit the, the idea is to limit the number of business vehicles parked there.
Yes.
Now, the issue is not more than a single commercial vehicle. Most, if not all pickup trucks, get commercial plates. Um, so for a couple of examples, say you get a folks running a, like a equestrian thing. And, um, you know, they have one pickup truck, big, big one to, to pull the horse trailer. And then they get another pickup truck just because they're pickup truck people, they'd be in violation unless they can stick one of them in the garage. Or you have a small carpentry shop, a lot of handy guys like pickup trucks. So say three of them that work there, pickup trucks that they buy to work, that would be regularly parked. And I don't know if there's a better way to distinguish commercial vehicle than the commercial plates, but.
So.
I'm pretty sure a light truck outside has commercial plates.
Could you, could you summarize this one here?
Wait, where is, yeah, where is this one coming from?
Sure, so Article Four, this has come up, um, you know, recently actually, where we've had a butters complaint about home occupation. People that are running particularly like landscape businesses where they have equipment on, on their property. And right now, we don't have anything in our bylaw that restricts how many vehicles they can have on their property. So I, you know, it's, it's a little legitimate concern.
So I have seen landscape, people like, you know, sometimes two or three trucks, I, you know, I've seen a couple others. The truck almost becomes a, like an advertising almost for.
Yeah, I, my issue is there's gonna be some better way of describing vehicles used for business versus commercial vehicle. Because I think an abutter could make a strong argument, it's got commercial plates, it's a commercial vehicle. You know, it's just, you know, well, this is my ride.
Does the, does the commercial vehicle, well, I mean, it's also, it has the weight requirement.
Could you say that's, Reed says a maximum weight requirement, so you can only have a truck this big.
Could you say like not including primary, primary car or primary insured vehicle?
Well, that's what I'd be looking for, some sort of distinguisher between, you know, some dude's pickup truck and, you know, the business's box truck.
Yeah, like not, yeah, so not including pri, you know, what is the insurance primary, you know, you're the primary dri, primary driver or.
So what, what part of this is new?
It's the underlying piece, number, number five.
So we're just saying one, one vehicle visible and if you have more, you're gonna need to screen them with landscaping.
You're gonna put it in the garage or hide it somewhere that it's not visible to the abutting properties.
So there are businesses like, I, I can think of some, where they have like their three vans, there's three service vans like way down.
So.
So is this just residential or is it limited business?
Well, this is home occupation, so this would be residential.
Yeah. Is it, should it say just residential or, oh, oh my god.
Accessory uses.
So, yeah, home occupation involves under accessory uses.
So how many of their complaints have there been like recently in the last year?
Well, I've received probably two emails about this since I've been here.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's not, you know, a major concern, but it is something that I think.
And how many vehicles do those complaints involve?
How many vehicles?
Yeah.
I'm not sure, basically, when we get, um, a complaint about zoning violation, Mike goes out and he'll talk to the property owner. He'll work with them to move their vehicles, get them into the garage, you know, he, he's really good about that, but I don't know the number.
Right, so would this have an effect on like horse farms?
If they have a home occupation associated with it, it could.
Well, like so Century, Century Mill Stables, you know, they're.
So they have a business certificate, so that's considered a home, I guess that would be considered a home occupation.
That's not the one I'm thinking of, but I, that's a big kind of parking.
I can, yeah, let me.
Horse carriage, you know, they have their horse trailer. Like, do they fall under farming, agriculture or?
That's, yeah, that's a good point, maybe, maybe they probably don't fall under home occupation, you're, you're right, they fall under agricultural.
So what are the other ones people can think of?
You're right, that's agricultural, that's not home occupation, so not, not a horse or a horse farm.
I think the main thing probably that I could think of is landscaping, probably.
Well, there's the lan, there's the landscape company on Ford Bush Road with equipment and stuff across from the soccer fields. Then there's like that dog.
I just assumed that was a farm.
I think there, no, there is a farm there, but there's like a rock pile and, and then I can think of like the dog security place, um.
Oh, yeah.
Can you think of any in your neighborhoods?
Well, you get Casolo Electric on Golden Run, but I never noticed, you know, having fans all over the place up there, so. And maybe that's an example of how to do it right.
So what have the people complaining said? Is this just?
Well, I mean, it's, you know, an email that says, oh, I've noticed that my neighbor has, you know, a lot of trucks in his driveway and, you know, I just wanted to make sure that they're, you know, complying with our zoning bylaw, can you check into it?
And then when Mike, when Mike goes out, he just like cajols them into doing it or says you can't do that?
Yeah, I mean, he says, no, he, he just says, you know, you really need to, um, you really should keep it to one vehicle in the driveway, you know, put one of the vehicles in the, in the garage and, and usually the, you know, most people are willing to work, work with Mike and say, okay, yeah, I can, I can try and clean up the property and.
I understand that this is Bolton, we don't wanna look like a bunch of hillbys. Basically, I think that's the objection.
I, every town needs their hillbys.
We do. I think that's a stop on the Hudson in mind, but I'm lucky enough myself.
Oh, we don't need to go back, so.
I know, but I can't think of the bold ones.
Do you feel comfortable about our article or do?
Um.
It's just, I, it's just something that's come up and, you know, Mike and I talked about it and I know Lunenburg has that requirement about, you know, one vehicle for, in the driveway.
Well, what, what, you know, what is, I mean, I thought we definitely had language in, I mean, there was definitely language in the the barn preservation by law about.
Number of vehicles? I think that had to do with parking, wasn't it?
Parking and screening, I thought the screening was in there too, but I don't, I don't think, you know, getting people to put in some screening if they're having.
If it's permanently there, yeah.
I think that's, I think it's fine.
I don't see a major issue with you, I just wanna find a way to clarify it.
I can ask Mike about, you know, if, if, if you have trucks that are for personal use versus commercial use.
Yeah, like how we can distinguish one versus the other in a, a way that Mike can say, you know, this is a problem, this is not a problem. And, you know, it'd be clear to everyone.
I mean, I think it kinda, it could be for the fact that maybe you have advertising on your commercial vehicle and not advertising it on your private.
I mean, that's, I mean, that's the one thing that I can see people complaining about, because I've seen, I mean, I don't wanna say any specifics, but I've seen trucks on people's property kinda seemed like in a very convenient spot with, you know, the name of the business and number and.
Hold it under the truck.
I could see people being, you know, annoyed by that potentially, but if it's only one, I guess.
Like one painting truck with ladders in the driveway, but if there are three?
Yeah, no, I, I agree.
Parked at all different angles to make it easier to read as you go. Yeah, that would be pushing the boundaries of good news.
So, I mean, maybe one, I mean, maybe it makes sense, it'd be nice to know, you know, maybe from Mike if, uh, he has more examples of it, but.
Sure, I mean, he has a lot more experience with this than I do, so I can.
It's probably good for a draft to keep it in there for now.
Okay.
Good placeholder.
I'm not opposed to the intent, just the, the current way it's written.
This, this angle commercial?
Where can they have, like for a painting truck, like, so maybe they have a van, but then maybe they have also a pickup truck with like the name on the side of it or something. You know, you get to that.
So for, for the ZBA one, like they can't sponsor it, we have to sponsor it?
Right.
Okay. Just, you know, remember, everybody will be taking one of these. Um, yeah, so the Jake Freak thing, I have to do some.
One of us get up and present it, but we could have someone from the ZBA get up and explain it.
That's true. I think you need to, uh, for the Jake Freak one, if you're presenting, you need to get like a recording going down the road. Don't even say anything, just turn on.
I'm sure if you get something off of YouTube from Top Gear episodes.
Top what?
Top Gear.
Top Gear.
So Jonathan, um, I didn't, I didn't put any language in here yet for this article, I just said to be determined.
Yeah, I actually worked on that.
You want me to, okay, are you working on that or?
Well, if.
I mean, I pulled, I have, I did a quick search, uh, the other day.
Does any town have this?
I'm having a really hard time finding just the Jake Freak bylaws. I did, I mean, a lot of towns have noise bylaws, I thought they had a good noise bylaw and they do have reference to Jake Freak in here. So I don't know if you wanna just, maybe that's the way to do it, is to start with a noise bylaw and then just kinda whittle it down.
Okay, I'd be great.
Is that, okay, so do you want me to help, help you with that one?
Like, if you have time, but you know.
I think I can start it and then just send it here.
Yeah, no, you can just do surrounding, I know, we talked about the noise bylaw briefly and we kinda bypassed it. Do surrounding towns have noise bylaws?
They do, not all of them, but some of them do.
Yeah, you just hate to, you know, impinge on the guy who just wants to mow his lawn, you know.
No, it's not about chainsaws.
Besides, you don't wanna pick off that guy with the chainsaw.
No, it's not, it's not, no, it's not a noise bylaw, it's just specific to the.
So you'd have a noise bylaws and then you put just.
No, we, we pull it out of other people's noise bylaws, the, this, the language about Jake breaks.
So you wouldn't have like some decimal number and they'd say specific noises.
So you're not trying to say there's no rock and roll in this town?
No dance, yeah, dirty dance.
There's definitely no rock and roll in any discotheques in this town.
You're talking about Footloose?
Yeah, I'm talking about.
We've already banned discotheques in any of your crazy rock and roll.
Come and ban, I'm bringing the rebels.
There's nowhere to go because there's no discotheques.
I'm gonna apply to the village overlay district and I'm gonna put in a discotheque with some parts banned.
Does anyone know what's gonna be banned with the Cobham building? Have you heard anything?
Getting cobwebs.
And, uh, when is CVS coming to town?
Not that I know of. I hadn't heard of that.
Have you heard anything about, about the Salt Box and CVS?
Oh, Salt Box, I have talked to Frank Patterson a little bit, um.
I've heard that he has.
It looks great, I went down and I, he gave me tour of the building, they've had a great.
So is the inside, is it like, coming along as nicely as the outside?
Not, not, well, no, he's not as far along in the inside, but.
He's probably waiting for applicants to figure out how to divide it up, I would assume.
Well, no, it's very, um, he's pretty much tied to what, what was, what was there originally, um, because of the septic system. Um, he's only, he can only do so much square footage of restaurants, so much square footage of retail and so much square footage of, of office because of the flows for the septic system.
He's redoing the septic system.
He's redoing it, but they're pre-existing non-conforming, so he's gotta stick to those, those uses and those flow rates.
So he's not rejiggering the inside then, huh?
Nope, so the uses are staying the same, so more than likely, he likely not have to get a special permit from planning board because it's, it's not changing.
Yeah, that's what it sounds like.
New tenants, but the same use.
The one thing I heard is that he has plenty of interest.
Yeah, I've heard that too, he's told me that, yeah.
No, it looks great.
Yeah, he's done a fantastic job.
Yeah, it looks awesome.
So, and he's talking about, for the restaurant space, he's talking about opening up a coffee shop where he'll have sandwiches, possibly a butcher shop, coffee. It'll be great, places it down, and that'll be in the front where the windows are.
So he'd be doing that?
His family would run it.
Oh, that's awesome.
It would be, I think it's, it's gonna be great.
Will they allow boots so Jonathan can walk there?
That's what I want, I want like, oh, send the kids down for lunch, if we can get a.
Sign or farm?
Yeah, there's a.
Do you have an idea, will they call it the Salt Box?
No, 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 he's granted it to six twenty six, man. It's no longer, I shouldn't say Salt Box, we should not be calling.
You know, I mean, the rest, the.
Oh, the restaurant, I don't know, I don't know yet.
That sounds great.
And then there's retail space upstairs or no?
Uh, I think it's office upstairs.
So like a law office or something like that?
Is there any elevator or is it all just rampage?
No elevator, uh, I don't think there's an elevator, just stairs. And I'm not sure, I, I don't know the building.
People keep telling me, it would be real, I wouldn't mind if CVS was in there, so there's little like asides to planning board members. Just people around, they're like, no, I, I wouldn't mind if a CVS was in there.
One is at South, and I said twenty six, go for it.
I know, but I'm just saying, have any of you heard that? Anybody whispering in your ear?
I wouldn't, I mean, I wouldn't mind if there was a pharmacy in town, personally.
Yeah, that's why.
It doesn't have to be CVS. I like that as a location, because then I can swing over to Dunkin's and get that coffee right after.
I mean, it doesn't have to be a CVS, I, uh.
But what else, it's gonna be CVS or Walgreens.
No, well, I mean, Hopkinton, us, Hopkinton Drug, I just drove through Lunenburg the other day, I bet they have an awesome town common, right next to town common is a little private drugstore, I mean.
Those are like.
I know there's a farm few between.
Yeah, no, that would be great.
But, yeah, I mean, it would be nice.
Western Acton one smells like the fifties.
I think people are more excited about food.
Yeah, agreed, yeah, of course.
Everybody wants a butcher.
Yeah.
I can't wait to see Cabello's open up.
Well, I know, yeah, keep your fire. Well, I know, yeah, can you follow? I know from the EDC perspective of things that, I mean, a lot of people, you know, we talk to people, "We don't have a farmer's market, we don't have a butcher shop." I mean, we, we, yeah, but we, we talk about like kind of the branding Bolton type thing, you know, why, you know, having a butcher shop with local meats and, you know, and stuff like that, you know, would be awesome.
I go to Berlin, take it out of the freezer, it's not quite the same, but it is all local animals.
Which, which shot, balance rock, balance rock, right?
Good stuff.
Haven't been there.
Are they going to put in any, one thing that, and I don't know if this exists, but my wife's friends constantly talk about it, "Yeah, we're going to Palati's," are we going to?
Yeah.
Something like that.
I, I heard that there, there was some talk about, you know, that and that.
We're just going to gentrify the hell out of this town, you know, just put some baray in there.
I don't know what baray is. I don't know what baray is.
Oh, it's pure bar, that's what I've read on it.
Oh, well, that's on Newbury Street, that is in Walde Street, but, yeah.
My wife about that.
A what, pure bar?
A pure bar is a bar, whatever it is, it's, it's basically ballet working, a bar.
Yeah, oh, ballet too.
It's the delusion of doing ballet will make you look like a ballerina or something.
Well, yeah.
Well, there's some utility to yoga and ballet and whatnot, I think that overall, if people are saying, what are you hearing, I'm hearing more like lifestyle centric health services sort of thing.
Yeah, so that's what we're going to have as traffic calming in town, is like all of these cars going in and out?
Just leaving them off right there.
Yeah, they'll be very calm when they're leaving from yoga.
They'll never be able to get onto one seventeen because they'll be so relaxed, they'll just be sitting there.
No, they're going to get very tense trying to get onto one seventeen.
That's true, yeah, they'll be completely wasted.
They're going to take a right, and then they're going to have to take a left. Anything else?
Meeting's devolved.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, or a schedule.
Well, a couple of things actually.
And the budget.
So you guys will pay with the articles, what we have planned, the other ones that we had talked about, phosphor updating, I talked to Carol about that, that's going to take some time to hash out, so I recommend that we push that off till next year, Carol and I can sit down and really go through that.
So as we just have in phosphor?
Phosphor was, yeah, we were discussing.
That's going to take a long time, so I think we really need, that needs...
Yep, I agree.
And then I had talked about modifying the driveway bylaw, but I talked to Harold, and he's dead set against that, so we're leaving that one alone.
What's the drive?
I had, you know, drainage from new developments, but he doesn't like that idea, so...
Because you feel like there's double drainage, and sometimes it even...
Causes problems, but he really doesn't want any runoff going to the roads, so I'll leave that one alone. And then the act before, I think we already decided we were going to push off, so that's that. Okay, and then the last thing on the agenda was, I talked to David Pettit about joining designer review board. So just recently, Ted Kirchner, he claims to come, he's flying out tomorrow for vacation, so he just, he didn't have time to come tonight, so David Pettit is currently on our EDC board. Ted Kirchner was on designer review board, but he has now moved to advisory, and for some reason, if you're on advisory, you can't be on any other board, so he had to resign from DRB. So I think David, Dave Pettit would be a great fit because he's a civil engineer.
I think he came in, he decided he's your EDC.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
What type of engineer is he?
He was civil engineer.
You're a civil, yeah, so...
You'd be great.
So he said he'd be, you know, if, if he needs to come in, he'll come in, but I said, "Well, at least bring it up to the board and, you know, see if they want to appoint him tonight, or you guys can wait and have a conversation with them."
There's two out of three now, is that what?
Right now, they have three, they have the chair and then two members.
My people, what's the full component?
I don't think they're, well, I don't think that bylaw specifies, but four's not, three's not a lot, four is better, I think, but...
So they don't have a quorum, I mean...
Well, for example... They've been three for a while.
Yeah, four has been the exception, but, you know, it, four is better.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking like in terms of the project that Michelle Tuck has next to the pantry cupboard, when that goes before designer review, she's going to have to recuse herself, and then it's just two members, so that just, it puts a lot of pressure on that designer review.
But I, I mean, I think there is a tradition of, you know, him coming in and just...
And I told, and I told him that.
It's not an interview, it's just...
No, and I told him that.
I mean, he has come in before, I just, I'm sure, I know he's perfect for it.
Okay, I will have him come to the next meeting then, and we can do it then, so...
And the schedule looks fine.
Oh, yeah.
Anticipate anything with that.
So I avoided the school vacations.
That's good.
Yeah, so that shouldn't be a problem.
That's not, where's the schedule?
I think it was right under your agenda.
I'm not sure which month yet, but in the first quarter of next year, I'm going to be in Nashville for like six, eight weeks.
Okay.
You can have a record. You guys can come down, keep calling me on the record. I can call in.
We love you talking to you, it's great.
No, it was Vegas, but...
Vegas, yeah.
So the legal... It's easy to sit there and listen to them.
I know.
Our management company and direction company are being bought by a major, so, and it's not Atlantic, so we have to wait, because if it's Universal or Sony, we should go through them, so we're delaying.
So what do we have to do with this budget?
Do you want to just take a vote on the schedule, or how did we do that last time?
We don't vote on it, usually everybody.
Yeah, this looks fine, here's the anticipated conflicts.
Okay, we're good on that, or?
Yeah.
You'll, whatever kind of debates you're having, won't be able to be in person for.
Yeah, usually we have, I mean, in the past, we've had like a spreadsheet with X's, but I think this is, if everyone wants to...
I think we did that for summertime. I kind of felt like winter is a little, maybe a little easier for people, but...
Where it's not two and fourth, second and fourth, April is the second and fifth or something.
I figured if I just made sure to avoid school, school vacations, you guys would be happy, so...
Yes, okay, that's good.
Okay, and then the budget is the same as last year, so I don't think there's really going to be any questions on that, but...
True.
I figured I would show it to you, and then...
Why do I have to remember meetings? Do we have a budget for like food and meetings?
No, that's for Erica to go to like EDC meetings and planning. But some of them we can go to, like, Erica says things and we don't go.
It looks like...
Like how to be a good town plan, no, like a good...
I'm planning, remember.
You said it's the same, it looks like the budget, the budget went down for like wages and stuff, or am I just looking at it wrong?
Well, we have a, a newer employee that had a lower scale that she needs to work her way back up.
Well, I'm just saying, it's a different number.
To twenty fourteen, there was a period where we were on our own, I think, or fiscal twenty fourteen, and there was the lag between, uh, what is one and...
We had a few months for that.
Oh, right, right.
So...
The budget looks less than, uh, but services?
I switched some of the numbers around a little bit, in total, it's the same, just because I was finding that I'm spending more money in legal notices, so I put more in advertising and then less in, and I wasn't really by law supplies, so I just, I was switching.
We're keeping the Bolton independent. With the advertising. Great.
And at some point, I think Linda sent you the date for when planning board needs to meet with advisory to get the flash report.
January twenty-sixth. I'll go and get Jonathan to that too.
No, I'd love some company, because they're, they're probably going to try and like cut off another ten percent.
And I feel completely comfortable doing my song too, it's up to you, I'm just not going to yell.
Oh, going to a meeting?
Or, yeah, because I'm...
But, so you have enough money for supplies, you're not buying?
I haven't bought any supplies for this with you.
You're not buying, but you have enough money.
I was repaying cash drawer overflow.
Okay, good.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. All in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Does anyone want to stay?
No.